Janice?
Um. Yes, I'm ready, we're on the record.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the local paper. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand at montclairenjusa.org. Streaming, if I didn't say that. Roll call is first.
Chair Wynn is excused. Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Schwartz is excused. Mr. Brandon is excused. Pastor Schlegler is excused. Ms. Willis is excused. Mr. Rooney.
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Ms. Lachman.
Here.
Mr. Barr. And Mr. Gilmer.
Present.
Okay.
And we have a quorum. First up is approval of the minutes from August 6th and August 13th.
I received changes to the August 6th minutes. Are there any additional changes to the August 6th minutes? All right. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. We also have the minutes from August 13th. I didn't get any changes to the August 13th minutes because I think you only sent me August 6th. So are there any changes to the August 13th minutes?
No.
Did I only send you August?
I think you just sent me August.
Oh, okay. I probably did have some changes. Hang on a sec.
Was it six? Back one in a closet?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Oh, the public was invited to question Ms. Wilkinson, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think I -- I just want to insert that, that the public was invited to ask to question Ms. Wilkinson, and there were no questions asked.
Let me make sure I get to the right page. It must have been on page three. No, page two. Page one. Okay.
Yeah, I think on mine it's the bottom of page one.
Yeah. Okay, I got it. Are there any other changes to the August 13th minutes?
No.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstentions.
Okay.
I have a question, though. Why do you give us copies of these for today if we've already had them in our packet? Aren't these on the resolutions?
No, I think those were emailed by Arthur.
The resolutions came after the packets went out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the resolution for application 2557 Valley and Bloom.
There any changes to the Valley and Bloom resolution?
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstentions.
Okay.
Next is the resolution for application 2565 448 Washington Avenue.
There any changes to this one?
Nope. Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Okay. Before we get into the next hearing here, if anybody's here for application 2566, which is 59 Glen Ridge Avenue, they've requested that the matter be carried to the next board meeting, so everybody knows it was on the agenda, but in case anybody was here for that.
So the official date for that will be the October 15th. So we'll carry that application to October 15th, and no additional notices required.
Thank you. So next up is application 2558. It is the lot line adjustment for 252-256 Valley Road.
Good evening. Alan Tremblak, coming on behalf of the applicants, Raymond Gray and Andrea Gray, who are the owners of 252 Valley Road. As you've indicated, this is a fairly simple minor subdivision application which really just involves a lot line adjustment whereby my clients, the owners of 252 Valley Road, would acquire a 600 square foot, 400 foot property from their adjoining neighbor, the owner of 256 Valley Road. 256 is a fairly unusual lot, and that's rather deep, rather narrow and deep, and then it has basically a T in the back. And what we're seeking to do is simply sever the left end portion of the T and attach that small parcel to my client's property. There's no variances or waivers triggered as a result of this application. It's fully conforming. We've submitted a subdivision map prepared by Richard Hingos, and we've received a memorandum from Ms. Tally confirming that there are no variances involved. And I would just propose to present some brief testimony from Mr. Gray in support of the application.
Sounds good.
Mr. Gray, we need to be sworn in.
Mr. Gray, will you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Raymond Gray, 252 Valley Road, Montclair, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Is your green light on, Mr. Gray?
Now it is.
Just want to state your name one more time.
Sure. Raymond Gray, Raymond Harry Gray, 252 Valley Road, Montclair, New Jersey.
You can't change your testimony, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? I was a friend of Preston Harrington, who is the owner of the land. Does that make any difference? I don't need to accuse myself of anything from this hearing.
Your personal friend?
He's dead, but you know.
Previous owner, right?
Oh.
Previous owner. Yeah, it's his estate that owns the property now.
I think you're okay.
I'm okay? All right. Just wanted to be sure.
As long as you're not communing with him at this time.
No.
Mr. Gray, are you one of the owners of 252 Valley Road?
I am.
And you own that property together with your wife Andrea?
I do.
And you live in the house on that property as your single -- as your primary residence?
Yes.
And how long have you owned the property?
About nine years, nine or 10 years.
Okay. And have you reached an agreement with the owner of the adjoining property of 256 Valley whereby you would acquire a portion of that property subject to this board granting subdivision approval?
Yes.
And you've reviewed the subdivision map that's been submitted with this application?
Yes.
All right. And that shows the piece of property in the rear that you proposed to acquire, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Would you just explain very briefly to the board the reason why you're seeking to acquire this 600 or so square foot piece of property?
Just to expand our backyard, the neighbor we were very close with before he passed away, and his sons offered it to us at one point. We talked about acquiring it from them, and when he passed away, they passed it on to us.
Okay. How is that piece of property currently utilized?
It's just yard.
Okay. And you propose to change it in any way if this application is approved and it became part of your lot?
Just plantings, but really no functional use other than expanding our backyard.
Okay. Just provide more space for your family?
Right.
Okay. Do you have any intention to construct any buildings or other structures on that piece of property?
No. No, at this point.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Gray?
I just have one comment. I do know that there's quite a few trees in that area that you're proposing to acquire. It's wooded right now, so if you propose to take down any of those trees, you need to get a tree removal permit from the town.
Yeah, there's no trees on that part that we would be getting. It's free of trees. However, there are a lot of trees over that with branches falling down on stuff periodically.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the public of this witness? Mr. Tremblak?
Well, I would only repeat what I said in the beginning, Mr. Chairman. It's a conforming subdivision. The properties are in the R1 zone. They currently comply with the zoning ordinance, and if the subdivision is approved, both lots would continue to comply, no variances. And I would ask that the board approve the application as submitted.
Thank you. I don't see any major issues with this. It makes sense to me. It seems pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any comments from the board?
No.
With that?
The resolution's quite straightforward. It's approved as presented. Just so I'm familiar, we've not had one so straightforward, so I was just clarifying.
I don't think there's any hidden issues on there.
Except maybe those trees on that area.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Maybe this is the beginning of something new.
That would be nice.
Be nice.
Motion by Mr. Gilmer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vice -- or I guess Chair for tonight.
Either way is fine.
Mr. Brodak, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
That is the quickest hearing we've ever had.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Four minutes.
Familiar with some wonderful ones, if you have.
Thank you.
On the next one.
Thank you very much.
Next is application 2574-510 Valley, Montclair LLC, 510 Valley Road.
David Owen for the applicant. This application concerns the property on Valley Road that's in Upper Montclair, and as most of you know, it contains the Acme supermarket and some other businesses, including Kidville. The focus of the application tonight is neither Acme nor Kidville. It has to do -- Janice, can you put that up on the screen, the renderings? It has to do with two, what we call, lower-level tenants. So I'm just going to take advantage of this while it's on the screen up here.
It's a microphone.
Yeah. Do we have the handheld? Okay. So the focus of the application.
David, 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 can you use the handheld mic, please, so we get you on the record?
So. It's on now? Okay? Okay. So we're standing, I'm going to get out of the way. We're standing with our backs toward Valley Road, and on the south side or the left side of the building, right over here, we have two lower-level tenants. They are down a set of stairs and in an area that is, quite frankly, somewhat like a well. It's about 10 feet below the parking lot grade where those doors, the sills of those doors, and it's about five feet below the side street here, the Alvin Place grade. And that's the space that we are concentrating on tonight. Not the two that face Valley Road, but the two that face Alvin Place. And more specifically, the applications for site plan approval and several variances for two aspects. First, to install a wheelchair lift along the stairs at the southeast corner of the building. And as you can see from the plans, that lift is to go right here, in this area here, and that provides ADA access, again, to those lower-level tenants. And the second aspect is to provide building and awning signs facing Valley Road and Alvin Place that identify those two businesses that are located below grade, and that will allow motorists to easily identify them and park proximate to them rather than not being able to find them and parking at the other end of the parking lot. I have just two comments before I call the witnesses. First of all, actually, I have three comments. First thing I want to say is those two lower-level commercial spaces involve one space occupied and, at the present time, another space unoccupied. The space that's occupied, which is furthest to the west, is the Max, which is a fitness studio, and the space that is closest to Valley Road to the east used to be a Realtor, I think it was originally RE/MAX, then Village Realtor. That space is now occupied. And that leads to one of my comments. If you look at this rendering, again, over here on the screen, at the top, that's our proposed signage. We'll talk a little bit about it. But it says at the top, signage, and then below it, it says the Max, okay? The Max is the tenant that's there, and what will happen is once the space that's a little bit further east is occupied, it won't say signage, it'll say whoever the tenant is. If it's a bakery, for example, it'll say bakery there. It's not going to say signage once somebody comes in. That's for illustration for the purpose of this application. And the last thing I want to say is I just want to emphasize two aspects of the property. I think it helps to drive home why this effort to get these signs to identify these businesses. There's a very substantial front yard setback at this end of the building. If you scale the property survey, it's maybe 220 to 240 feet, the Valley Road. And of course, the other aspect of this application is this change in grade. I think it's possible that some of you maybe didn't even know that there were commercial spaces down there. Some people know it, some people don't know it. But the idea is to get people from the road and on the sidewalk oriented to that signage at the southeast corner of the building and to say, yep, I get it, that's where they are. We go down the stairs and we get to those businesses. We're also proposing signs right over the doors that face Alvin Place, simply because there is some traffic on Alvin Place, and just about every business has a sign right over its door so people know what it is. And if you happen to be on Alvin Place, you have to kind of look down in that grade. If it's possible for you to read any lettering on the windows, so those signs will help that. John Buckholz, please.
Sir, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you please, using that microphone, state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Sure. My name is John Buckholz. I'm the president of Buckholz Architects. It's B-U-C-H-H-O-L-Z, as in zebra, John.
Would you please very briefly summarize your qualifications?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, New York, and Florida. I received my license, well, I graduated from Pratt in 1979, a registered architect in New Jersey in 1982. I've been the president of Buckholz Architects for the last 30 years. I've appeared before at least 200 boards throughout the state. I've appeared before this board in the past, and I've been approved as an architect, a witness as an architect, in numerous municipalities throughout the state. All my licenses are up to date, and I continue to do planning boards throughout the year.
I offer Mr. Buckholz as an expert in architecture.
We'll accept him.
Thank you. I'd like you to review the project and the design, please.
Okay. Basically, as we talked about, the, this project that was given to us by the owners started out as ADA accessibility.
Mr. Buckholz, can you use the handheld mic? Thank you.
Sure. So the drawings that I have here are the drawings that the board has. Some boards are asking them to be exhibits. There's nothing different than what was provided, so.
Do we need to pre-mark these?
No, no.
It's the same that everyone has.
We already have it. I have pre-marked.
Do we need to mark the electronic exhibit?
Yeah, I have pre-marked the exhibit, some of the exhibits that have already been submitted, if I can read them into the record.
Sure.
So A1 is the application. A2 is the certification of taxes paid. A3 is the proof of publication. A4 is affidavit of service. A5 is a property survey by DPK Consulting dated December 18th, 2012. A6 is the architectural plans by Buckholz Architects dated August 24th, 2018. A7 is the Watkins' Report dated August 13th. A8 is the Watkins' Report dated August 31st. And A9 is the planning report dated August 31st.
Oh, we have one that's 10.
So this will be A10. Well, whatever, your new one will be A10.
Okay.
So is this going to be on the screen as well? No, no, just in, okay.
We had just figured because we had them, and those help represent what we're looking to do.
You should make it clear that's what's on the screen.
Again, I guess we could always mark these. What these boards are, this one is what's on the screen, and what also we've sent are, so this is the front, before and after, and I'll go through these, and this is the side, before and after.
So that, so we'll do the front as A10 and the side as A11?
Okay.
All right, I can do it right now.
So if I can, starting with the drawings that are up on the easel, the A0 dated 22nd of June, 2018, this is just the cover sheet that we typically provide the board with information throughout the project.
Mr. Buckholz, what's the revision date on that?
Sorry, August 24th?
Perfect.
The last one?
Yep. Just making sure.
Sure, no problem. It's always good things. So basically, it's got the zoning charts, the typical information, the owner's name and information. We've put on a site plan that DPK consultants had prepared some, a couple of years ago. The area that we're talking about is sort of the, on the southern side of the site, it's the corner in which, this is the supermarket over here, Kidville is to the left, and Alvin Place is the road that comes up along the side. So these two spaces that are in here are, on this side, they're in a lower level, and they're hidden by what is this facade that stands there today. So as our attorney had indicated, this is 240 feet from the roadway, and when you're driving this direction, your eye is pointed in an awkward situation of not being able to see these stores in any way. When you're coming this way, again, your eye is looking straight down, and it's a further angle to see the stores that are here. So in the positioning of how this shopping center is seen and perceived from the road, it's much closer on this side, so your eye's got better focus over here. When you're coming this way, it's substantially further away. So there's a negative and a hardship in this case, that they are so far away, they're tucked on the side completely, and they're down 13 feet from the street level or the roadway level that's here. So these have kind of been a hidden area that's been in here in all of the markets that we all have now. Retail is tough. Things are more difficult to get leased, and people, people want to be seen, they want to know where they are. This shopping center's been around a long time. Everyone, if you mention the supermarket, they know where it is, but if, when you get to the, when you get to the shopping center, you have no clue where these two stores are. And that's what we've been getting on a regular basis, of not being able to find it with the tenants that were there, the difficulty of where this is. So they asked us to, one, take a look at ADA accessibility, and, two, better signage.
Can I just ask you a question? So is the address for the two lower-level stores, is that Alvin Place address, or is it?
It's technically an Alvin Place address, but, but the subject property is five lots.
Right. So I'm just wondering if you put the address into GPS, are you getting to turn on to Alvin Place, or, you know, just kind of curious?
You know, it's a good question. One of the properties, I believe, has an address of Alvin Place Rear. It doesn't even have a number.
Okay.
And so I think the way you present this application is it's a building that spans five lots.
Yeah.
And it runs in Valley Road. Janice Tally raised in her memo, could we consolidate the lots? And we can do it. We looked into whether there would be any reason not to. I think that'll assist, you know, any, any future applications, whether or not any of us in this room are here to judge them in the future, but future, you know, it'll be one lot, which is really what it should be, because the building spans it.
And the parking is, is on Valley Road? You can't park on Alvin Place?
Right, right.
That's right. There are apparently people who drive down there trying to find these businesses, and the only way to park is to park on somebody else's property. And, but you're right, there's not separate parking. Parking's on Valley Road. That's the orientation.
So I think they really want to draw their customers into the parking lot.
Sure. And they probably want a Valley Road address, then, not an Alvin Road address.
You would think. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And just to clarify there on the parking, so my daughter's done now four plays for the youth theater there?
Yeah.
The Essex Youth Theater across the street. So all of that parking there is actually for the youth theater? Is that correct? Down, like, further down Alvin?
There are a number of businesses back there, and my impression is, is that the parking, I don't know whether it's ever been approved or whatever.
Right.
There's no site plan approvals, other than, other than the Laundromat property.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
There's no site plan approvals for any of the properties there, other than the Laundromat, where you've got the formal parking.
It's a practical matter. People just park in front of those businesses, and it seems to function.
Right.
You know?
Right, but it's, I mean, there's nothing on, there's no line markings or anything, so.
The property lines are at crazy angles back there.
Then there's the train.
It's basically a free-for-all back there.
Right. Okay, yeah.
First serve, and remember the lawnmowers used to be back there?
Yeah.
So that, that area was always, you know, things were back there, and that's, you know, one day it will be productive again, but, you know, that provides more parking, as you say, to the theater, and you're not necessarily going to park all the way back there and come forward.
Right.
So, so I.
While we're on that topic of where people park, that, I think I said this at the outset, but if you're at that shopping center enough, you'll notice that, not all the time, but much of the time, the parking is closer to Acme, because that's what people are basically using.
Right.
This area here that's right in front of these signs facing Valley Road that we're proposing is actually where people park less often, and that's part of the intent here is to get people who are going to go down and use those lower levels.
Right.
To park in front of it and not park on the other side of the parking lot, so, you know, where's the Max? You know, that's, that's obvious.
Right.
But wouldn't that have a potential to interfere with the Kidville, with the kids walking in that portion of the lot, David?
Oh, I don't think so. I mean, they, you know, Kid, I remember reading the Kidville resolutions attached to the memo, and they seem to be pretty clear about staggered classes, and I think, I think the Kidville parking is really right in front of Kidville. I was thinking primarily of the parking spaces that are right along that retaining wall that you can see.
But a question. The properties in Alvin Place are not associated with this application, correct?
No, no. Other than the ones that are, other than the subject property.
Kidville and.
That's correct.
Everything to the right.
To the right, but not to, yeah, okay.
But everything to the left.
It's not.
Except for one property at the back, Lot 12, which is the lawnmower shop.
Yes.
And that's a separate property?
That seemed to have a little bit of front yard parking, too.
It's, it's a separate lot.
That's a separate lot, and it's a separate business, not part of this application.
Which we're talking about conjoining those together.
But you're talking about making them all one lot, including the lawnmower place?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
510 Valley, Montclair LLC owns the five lots that are the subject of this application. There's an additional lot.
Right.
That's not the subject, Lot 12, which is behind it and closest to the railroad.
Essentially, it's all the lots, it's all the lots under the shopping center here, which should have been consolidated, consolidated many years ago, but never was.
Do you have a survey or a site plan?
It's on the cover sheet. It's, it's on the, it's on the lower-left side of the cover sheet.
I'm having some difficulty in locating the property lines.
It's on the cover sheet. It's on the lower left side of the cover sheet.
I'm having some difficulty in locating the property lines. Can you maybe just trace where the property line is? Not on the right side of the front, just the side in question.
The side that's in question?
Yeah.
It's where the retaining wall is. It is, in other words, this Alvin Place is the roadway, which goes right onto the retaining wall that's there. If you, actually, if you look on page A1, there's a photo of the side of the building.
Yep.
You see a retaining wall in the upper left where it says existing conditions three. There's a retaining wall that's right there.
Okay, if you go to A2, look at the property line and it crosses the... it crosses over the retaining wall.
Yeah, well, if you... to that point, it's one foot eight off of that retaining wall.
Do you see the diagonal line I'm talking about?
It kicks back over.
So is that improvement... who owns that improvement?
I have the original survey and there's an easement over that property.
An easement, oh, that's a site... that's a survey.
Do you want me to bring it to you?
That would be great because this is hard to... Just black line is it? Okay, so a good portion of... okay, so there is an easement then. Has that easement been documented? So a portion of what we're talking about is not on this property.
A portion of...
There's an easement that...
Where the sidewalks are down by the... in the back of the property. It's part of an easement.
Okay.
Or not on this property.
None of our improvements we're bringing today are anywhere near that.
Okay, we just said as a part of the process of site plan, we need, you know, a surveyed site plan that's... that shows where the property line is. So I was just... the property line seems like it crosses the platform and then hugs the building.
Mr. Buckholz, you're saying that the ADA ramp won't cross over that line?
Yes, again, at A2, the furthest that goes down is well within those areas. It's significant, you know, it's apart from that line. So it's all within this area here. So this line comes up along the side, one foot four. A 28-foot wide road, so it's nearly... it's nearly hugging, you know, it's sort of hugging the side of where this wall is here. It does take a sort of a line across here, which is kind of awkward because all of this is how you get into this.
Okay, I just, I don't know, you know, I just see it looks like the entrance to... in order to get into that other space, it looks like you've got a crossover. If there's an easement, there's an easement, I guess.
Right, it's an existing condition, you know, where the entrance to the east...
I think they have it essentially correctly. Where we're doing anything here are on two of the five lots, Lot 14, and Lot 14 is the one that has that property line that comes back in toward the building, okay? We're putting the facade extension there and then we're proposing two signs that are actually on Lot 13, but they're on the building. And Janice is correct that half of that sidewalk in that well area is on our property and another portion of it is on an easement. And it functions and...
So the entrance to the rear space moves across an easement?
The max. Yes.
It's a secondary...
Should that easement be presented so we know that there's control of that property so we know that the applicant has the ability to do so? Otherwise, you can't prove that there's appropriate access.
I don't have...
Appropriate access, but why?
Well, it's been, you know, I mean, it's... as she said, it's an existing condition. It's been used a long time.
Well, I suppose the people in the back say, no, you can't use it anymore.
I have two means of egress.
You can't.
I have egress out the back of the stores and I have the egress that's in the front.
Okay, if it's... it's just a little bit odd to me that, I mean, either you have an easement or you don't. So if you've got one, can you present an easement that shows that you've got the ability? I'm asking, I think, is a rather simple question.
Well, we probably can, but we can't tonight because I don't have...
Oh, okay, but you could.
Yes, I believe that we could, yes.
You might want to just, in order to document this fully, is just present the easement so we know as a condition, that's all I'm saying.
Tony, your concern is that because the rear stairwell there is part of an easement...
It's not on the property that's being applied for.
Right. But the entrance, you have two entrances in the rear?
No, no, there's one entrance in the rear coming... one coming out of each of the two spaces that are in there.
Oh, it's a... okay.
But this is the... this is one entrance going down toward the well.
No, I understand about the stairwell. I'm talking about the entrances to the stores, the locations.
Right, entrance here and entrance over here and then...
Yeah, what I think Tony's concerned about is that one of the entrances may not be on the subject property.
It's not.
But it's within the easement and these subject property has had those entrances for well over 30 years.
I understand. So, David?
Yes. Yeah, it's, you know, on the survey...
Entrance over here.
That's right. So it's not on the property.
On the survey, it says, now that I'm looking at it, says ingress and utility easement. Ingress, egress and utility easement. And they refer to the D book in the page. You can see it right on the property survey. I think those are over.
Yeah, you're right, it's here.
I think it's the shaded area.
The easement looks like it's 20 feet wide that goes to the rear of the property. It doesn't look like it goes by the end. Yeah, we can see it right here. It's...
It's possible, I don't know, it's possible it could be associated with the private road, Alvin Street. It could be associated with it.
Do you have a copy of that easement?
I do not.
Not tonight?
No.
You don't even have a copy back in your office?
I do not. We're not doing anything on the easement other than people are, you know, walking over it like they do now. In other words, we're not putting any installation on it.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to...
In fact, we've actually removed some things from it. We took down the feather banner signs, so they're now gone.
Well, that was...
Some of those were on the sidewalk.
They're a little illegal.
I hear you.
I was trying to be...
Yeah.
Normally, you'd have, you'd show ownership or control. And I do see the easement, but it's... it looks like it's a vehicular easement that goes to the rear and it doesn't abut the...
Also, there's a... yeah, it's hard to see on this map, but we can certainly go back.
Well, that one is clear. I could see it on that.
Yeah, let's...
Sure. So let me start back. So ADA accessibility, we tried putting in, we talked about lift, we talked about several other things. So what we're doing is across these stairs, we're putting a track that will come here. There'll be a button at the top of the stair. You press the button, the lift will come up the track, it'll come down, the wheelchair will enter the lift, go down the stairs, person gets off and the lift holds back up against the wall. So this will provide us the ADA accessibility of getting people from up here down to here. So this is kicking that way. So now what we've looked to do is, we're now based on, again, on A2. We are doing an area that's roughly about 66 square feet. So it's roughly seven by almost 10 square feet, a little short of 10 square feet. We are expanding out that canopy.
And that's what shows in A10 and A11, correct?
Yes.
Over here.
So when you look at this space, the canopy today, if I can, extends past the building across here, extends over the existing staircase. So this provides rain and snow shelter, you know, short of driven rain over the existing stair. So this projects out this way. We're going to bring that exact, this dimension, straight across and support it down here as seen in this elevation. So it's the same object, building element that comes out and comes down to that location. So it's meant to provide the additional signage that's up there. It's sort of keeping the continuity of the shopping center running straight across. It's kind of already in a strange... it doesn't quite, it just comes out a little bit, doesn't come out all the way. This is out here. So this kind of grounds the building in the corner of that space. I can't go any further. I could make it a little bit shorter, but it doesn't make sense. So it kind of runs itself out there and it provides a box where we could find signage. It sits up a little bit higher and everything is in the same proportion of what exists there today. So it looks as if it was always there from the time that this was originally put on. And the intent is to continue the same colors that are there today. We're utilizing the red that's in here right now, but, you know, we would like to make it clear that in the future, we may get somebody that's got a corporate color and in that one box, we may change that background in some way. We may change the color of the letters when we get them. And we'll talk about sizes and things, which is part of the application. But its intention is that that's the piece that you're seeing is this here, but its footprint is basically seven by 10. It's 66 square feet, so it's a very small footprint and it's sitting on what was planter before. So it's... there isn't more sidewalk necessarily there. There isn't more... it's really, if anything, covering over the sidewalk at this time.
So while you're on the planter and before we forget it, Mr. Watkinson has issued a report where he thinks that a drywall should be in. I think you want to address that. You may be able to tie in the drainage to the existing or you may not need a drywall. Tell the board members what...
There was some discussion at a design review meeting about now we're putting a building over, you know, landscaping, so the plants are going to die for lack of...
Not deserving?
So part of the thought was is that we are going to put in some, you know, drought-resistant landscaping in here low. We'll do spirea, we'll do some other, which we'll submit to the town engineer, those different plants and make sure he approves it when we do these working drawings. We'll go through that. Our other option, what we've looked at, is I can tie this roof in to the main roof. So I can take the majority of this water off of the roof and pull it back in and dispose of it as we do for the rest of the center. The design review committee had talked about maybe a small portion of the water being drained into this planter, which once we get, once, you know, should we get a positive approval from this board, my next step is to get on a ladder, get up there, take a look at what all the roofs are doing and see if we can't pitch a good portion of this water off of this. Because part of the other concern I have here is that this is a very narrow planter. It's sitting, you know, on... we'd have to dig this whole thing out and then put... I can make it a base, I can simply dig down and do a small drywall in there or we can put in a sidewall outlet. If this were to overfill, we seem to be getting a lot of rain, thank God, not like the South right now. But if we were to get a lot of driven rain, I'd like this not to be a waiting pond for...
So I think what you're saying is as a condition, you would coordinate with Mr. Watkinson and see whether you need to do the drywall or something else would be...
Right. We're just relooking at this and saying, I think that if we put landscaping in here, we're going to be okay. So that's basically the establishment of what this is. So, Janice, I don't know if we can go to the second photo, just to, just so that the board... this illustration here is...
That's A-11?
That was... A-11 is the side. So this really does show you how the side of the building will look. So it's just taking this element and wrapping around, coming out to two columns here, same colors coming over. It kind of produces that. Put a couple of lights in there, so we'll get some light down on this landscaping, it illuminates. It brings light down onto the sidewalk here. There are lights that in the working drawings will put LEDs, which will be narrow focus. The intent is to hit this staircase so it's well lit. We're going to put some new lights in this lower area here. So the intention is, is that this will help keep the rain and snow off of this area. We'll get some lighting in here. So you can see, it's just, again, it's this area here. It's already out here, we're just bringing it out here, 66. So it gives you a sense of where that is. And then the other thing is, we do have another entrance. When we were talking about how we get down here, there are steps coming from Alvin Place that also bring you in. So you can come in here, you can go up this way and you can go out that way. So there are several ways to get down to this location going that direction. So we just wanted to make sure the board understood what this element was, that we were just literally stretching that canopy out, you know, another seven feet and that's pretty much what's there. The, probably the last item that we were talking about on A1, this elevation here, this line shows where the expansion is occurring. So this is what's expanding up here. This is that seven feet, we're creating this column. So what's happened is we've created this location of signage. It's that, it's that red insert that's there. So what we are proposing, because these properties are down below and they're not facing like we would have a normal shopping center, we're proposing that one be put on top of the other, that they're not next to each other. Because we wanted, they're different, they're downstairs, so... and what we've done is we've taken this space, which is about nine foot nine and three foot six, and the actual letters would be about one foot three each. So the issue here is that your zoning ordinance, you know, is, only allows two-foot height of letters. We have a little bit of a hardship in trying to... if I stack these into two foot of space, we have a space in between and depending on how we use the area around this, we lose a couple of inches up here, a couple of inches here. These letters become very small. So we were, because most names of stores tend to extend out a little bit more and I need some of the linear space, we wanted to get some space along here. We can always put a line in between here. I can change the background color to differentiate the two. So our intention is to go this way and these letters will only be one foot three. They will be, if I take one foot three, two inches and one foot three, I am larger than your, than what you have in your ordinance. But if you look at Kidville, we would, when you stack them, they're going to be very similar to the height of Kidville.
Kidville never received a variance for the size of its sign.
I don't know.
I double-checked, so I... you keep... I just want to reset.
Sure.
Their plan showed a 24-inch sign.
They did, okay.
Kidville.
Yeah. There's no variance granted for a larger sign.
Okay, it's not the architect, so I hear you. I don't know.
I have a, just so you understand the letter size, I have a photograph with a tape in it that shows that the two L's in Kidville are 30 inches, okay? And so that sign, the Kidville sign, is going to be almost twice as tall as each of these that we're proposing. That gives you a little bit of sense. One feet three inches, 15 inches, 15 inches compared to 30 inches. So they're not as, they're half the size of Kidville. But we are putting, we're hoping to put them on top of each other simply because they aren't side-by-side storefronts facing Valley Road. You don't really get to see them until you go down the stairs.
So again, proportionately, the intention was Kidville and then the two signs being very similar in terms of height and being linear. Because most naming or stores are different, are looking for more of a linear. If you did two-foot-high letters, you're going to have a 12-foot-long sign typically. If you look at your downtown, it's more linear. And that's why we went with the linear rather than two signs this direction, so...
And let's shift the focus just for a second. You're also proposing two signs that are facing Alvin Place, correct?
Yes.
Just very quickly review that.
These signs that are here, they're roughly two foot, you know, conform by 11, and this is two foot by 11. So these would, when you finally get down to this lower level, these would be roughly over the doorways of where you would enter.
So let's also clarify this for the board. The sign to the left that says the max on it is an existing sign, correct?
It exists, it exists today.
And what we're proposing to do is to retain that sign and to put a sign of the same shape, two feet by 11 feet, over the other business that's now vacant and that would go up when a tenant is located, right?
Yes, yes.
I don't think I have anything else.
No, that's basically it. That's what we're looking to do.
With regard to the signs, I'm just wondering about people still figuring out the direction and position of those establishments. Would there be, or is there anything now out actually on Valley that indicates what is further down Alvin?
No.
And then in the sign, it would just be the lettering? I know the top one is a placeholder, but right now it would just be the lettering that's there.
You know what, you're reminding us that there's one other detail we should bring to mind. I first want to go to like a freestanding sign on Valley Road. If you just list them like in a totem pole, that's still not going to help people who don't know where this somewhat different area is that's down in the well. And I don't think that solves our client's problem. I think what we're proposing does. But we also have an awning that will match the existing Kidville awning and it will come off the side of the building. And on the lower six inches where we're allowed to have lettering, we're also going to have the names of those two businesses with, I think, a little arrow that points down to help people, once they close in, really get it. You know, oh, I go down the stairs.
It seemed awkward to put like kind of over and up, kind of a 90-degree arrow at the top sign, but I was just hoping there's some sort of direction given and I think...
And I missed that.
On the awning, right.
On the drop of the canopy, which would continue, you know, saying, look, we put the max, whatever the signage would be, I mean, so this does say lower level.
You mean the awning?
The awning.
Yeah, it's just like the existing Kidville sign on the lower six inches where the awning folds. You have the letters on it and we're just doing what the ordinance allows. I think it's six inches.
Are you adding to the Kidville awning or is it going to be a separate?
Separate awning.
Hopefully, the look is that it extends, that it's, you know, it could change color one day because someone downstairs has a corporate color that they're looking to. But for right now, we're proposing it just becomes a continuation and it ends up against this column.
And with the wheelchair ramp, so it operates outdoors in all different, you know, not all weather conditions, but in all regular weather conditions?
In our normal conditions, you know, short of a flood, yes.
It's a chairlift, right? It's a chairlift, right?
A chairlift.
Yeah.
Chairlift. There's one other question there. I don't, I don't know if this is relevant, but I know there is some shaking from the trains that come by.
Okay.
Is there any, any concern around the chairlift and vibrations when it's in use or having?
I mean, when this comes down, there is, you know, the way, the way it works, there's this apparatus that's to the side of it, and that when this, when this comes down, it actually has, you know, a bar that comes on the sides, that open, and then the wheelchair can hold on to the sides. So it's not that they can free fall out of this, it's a whole device that opens up, and they're in a safety area, and it takes them down. It's meant to be, let's just say the batteries ran out, it's meant to go like an elevator, it recesses all the way down. Now, the problem you have is, the person is now stuck downstairs, but you, there's a device, you can call someone, or everyone's got a cellphone these days, the fire department will come and get them out. But, there's safety factors in these, this is, you know, we're using one of the major manufacturers that does escalators and elevators, so Handy Lift does this on a regular basis, that's all.
And in the current condition, they would come up Alvin, and up the ramp into the Acme parking lot? Is that the only way?
Well, there's no way to get down there today, other than taking someone down the staircase. So, you would, you would come up to the top, and there's handicap spaces at the front.
There happens to be a barrier-free parking space closest to that proposed lift, it's just, it's just the way it is. The closest parking space to that lift is a barrier-free space, so it worked out well.
Right.
And the train does vibrate, because my office is 10 feet from the tracks, and I feel it every day.
Yes, I felt it in the theater a few times, an extra character onstage.
Yes.
Just a question, did you say, oh, I'm sorry, did you say it was a battery-powered chairlift?
Well, no, but sometimes, you know, there is, if the power goes off, it has a battery that allows it to go down to that position. If the battery is fully charged, it'll take you up. But if, for any reason, we always find batteries, don't always, so if it finds it doesn't have enough power, it will take you down. The intent is not to strand a handicapped person in the middle of a stairwell, because then they, they feel as though they can't do anything.
Did you consider having a ramp, like, that doesn't really work, rather than a chairlift?
Well, part of the problem is, we're about 12 feet down.
You're too high, too high.
So for every inch, you have to go out a foot. So we probably have about six, and if anyone has kids that skateboard, they would have loved if we did the ramp, so.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Owen, you spoke about Mr. Watkins' letter with regard to the dry well, I guess Mr. Buckholz said. What about the other items mentioned in his two letters?
We're okay with everything in both of the letters, and those letters are A-7 and A-8, with the exception of the dry well, which I think you can pass your condition that would say, our architect will confer with the board engineer and figure out what's the right thing to do.
That's fine. And then, what is the condition, I didn't go down before the application, but what is the condition of that retaining wall that separates the subject property from the Alvin Place side?
It's reinforced concrete, it is in good condition, and part of, obviously, our renderings have cleaned up the walls a little bit, but the intention is, is that when this wall gets put up, the walls will be repainted, the space downstairs, we're going to do a little bit more concrete downstairs, there are four drains that are down there already to be able to take things. So, the general intention is to clean up some more landscaping, clean up the entire space, because now we have this new entrance, and then provide someone with a nice office space downstairs.
Okay.
Another question. Is there any signage on Valley Road? I can't recollect that indicates, there's nothing?
There's a freestanding sign on Valley Road that goes something like Acme, Kidville, then I think there's a current blank, because the realtor moved out, and then there is the Max. But that sign is at the, pretty much the other end of the property, the northernly end of the property, and, you know, the idea is, is to try to get people focused.
Sure, no, I'm just saying, in addition to what you're looking at, I would like to make sure that there's other signage as well.
It looks to be a very old freestanding sign.
Yeah, it is.
It's very, it's very old, and I happen to have handled the 1996 application, the resolution for which is attached to your memorandum, and I guess most people, I think some of you might remember this, but in the southeast corner, not of the building, but of the property, where Alvin Place and Valley Road meet, there used to be a repair station. I think it was part gasoline station, part automotive repair, and by the time I came along in 1996, it was ugly. And the whole idea at that point was to start to clean up the property, and I'm thinking that that freestanding sign is about as old as that.
Probably.
Gas station.
Probably. I'm just thinking, since you're talking about signs, wouldn't it be a good idea at this point to fix up that sign and add your two new tenants to it?
Well, I think the sign is in fairly good condition, it just needs to have a sign for the new tenant. It's old, but I think it's maintained.
Okay. Well, I think, we had this discussion today, because there's a variance to have the building sign for, on the front facade, because the store is not there. You can have a, our ordinance says that you can have a building identification sign for stores that front on that facade. So, that's one of the variances, because the stores are actually on the side. So, the alternative is, we do allow freestanding signs, I said, well, why don't you put a freestanding sign, or a monument sign closer to Valley Road, where people can see it, so, and then you wouldn't necessarily need such a big identification sign when the stores are actually on the sign, more of a directory sign. So, there's a lot of components of the signage package here, for thought?
Well, I'm just thinking of both. You know, we want to encourage businesses, that's a difficult corner, whatever we can do to kind of help them, and make a viable business in that corner, is what I'd be thinking of.
I don't think we need a freestanding and, and the facade, but we thought through it, and the facade is really what we would like to have. And the variance Genesis identified is because the facade extension technically extends beyond the portion of the building occupied by those tenants, because as you can see from these illustrations, you know, even the existing wraparound is out further than those tenants that are in what I call the well area.
We generally don't permit tenants who don't front on the, the front of a building to have a building sign, so that, this is a little bit different.
Yeah. So even if that facade didn't extend past the building, it still would require a variance.
Right.
Because of the angle, basically.
Well, because, because the stores are actually fronting on the side.
Yeah, the stores are fronting on the side.
The front of the building.
Yeah, like, if Valley actually ran where Alvin was, this would be very strange.
I think, I think the argument can be made that the difference here is, the parking is in the front.
Right, right, right.
So, they want to put the signage where the parking is.
I mean, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is to help these two businesses really compete, and to have tenants stay there in the long run, and that's why you have barrier-free access, and you try to get people to go, okay, I know where it is, I get it, and they come over and, and they're there.
And Alvin Place is not a collector, really, it's not something, you have traffic going well, you have to go to see a play, or have a wall mowed, be repaired.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of both myself when I had asked earlier, it wasn't about not having this sign, it's how difficult it is to navigate that whole area, so.
The area in general.
I've been on the phone with a lot of people trying to just find the theater, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's really true.
Yep.
So the other question is, so, the area where you're putting up the ADA accessible, whatever, elevator?
Lift.
Lift. That's wide enough to accommodate both the lift and someone walking down the stairs at the same time. Okay.
Got a couple of questions. You mentioned installing new lighting?
Yes.
Is that shown on the plans?
Well, what's there is, is existing lights that are underneath, so, underneath the existing is five lights that are underneath there, which are the old halogen lights that are there. When we do the working drawings, we're going to put in new LED narrow-focus lights, so that the light doesn't go off the property. The intention is that we're going to put those LEDs just to light the, this area here. And the intention is to light, put two lights underneath this, just to light this landscaping so that they're coming there, because this has lights underneath it now. So we're looking to extend it and replace with new, and there are wall sconces that are down, down at the lower level.
Will there be new lighting underneath the new canopy?
This canopy will have one and two lights in here. And they're, they're meant to be just downlights focused in on these areas, and that general illumination for any parking or anything else.
So it would seem to me we would need a lighting plan to go along with this?
I was just thinking that. Will that be reviewed, Janice, when they apply for building permits?
I think what we would like to do is have you submit it as a, as a condition of resolution.
Yep.
So you can do it when you do the building permits, and it holds it up? Or you could do it before you do the building permits, and, you know, any issues get?
We'll do it in any direction if the board wishes us to do it before, that will be settled.
Usually it's better to do it before.
Yes, please.
We can do that.
Good. You also mentioned some other plannings, Mr. Buckholz. Are those going to be native New Jersey plannings?
Um...
You have to foresee this question coming.
Only Essex County.
No, no, I'll take, I'll take native New Jersey.
Yeah, nothing is evasive.
Isn't that something you recently added to one of your ordinances, a site plan ordinance, or the native plants?
Yes.
But I'm, in dealing with Mr. Watkins, I'm sure that if there's anything that we suggest that he doesn't think is on your list, we'd be more than happy to make those changes.
Okay. And then, a little bit about the drainage. I think it's a great idea to put the roof leader in to water those plants that are there. I would be a little concerned about a spillway into Alvin Place, because we've had some other issues on other properties, where, you know, in the wintertime, rain, you know, the roof melts, but the road is still frozen, so you get this nice patch of ice that's a hazard to people and cars. So I would, I would prefer to not see a spillway into Alvin Place.
That's why we didn't want to just bring the leader for this whole thing in there, because I can't control how a train falls into this.
Right.
So our intention really was just to bring a small amount of water.
Sure.
We will, yeah, we will forego then the, that's covered.
All right. So you're not going to have any signage at all on the south side of this facade extension?
No. Well, when we, when we talk about south...
No, I'm talking about what you're adding to.
No.
I think you're talking about this area right here.
That area there and beside it, right?
Oh, and that area there.
No, we were not anticipating anything there.
Any other questions from the board?
Just on materials, so, mentioning this extension at the top, could you provide more details on how you'll match the, I think there's a, yeah, this exhibit I think is a bit better, how you'll match the top there, so that it really is as continuous as it looks on the image? So, yeah, which materials you'll use in matching?
Well, this is all, you know, stucco along here, as a matter of fact, all of this is stucco. So we're just going to take the details that were done previously here. This is just three layers of three-inch material, two-inch and one-inch, which gets you this here. These are just flat, this is an exterior drive-in system that's on here, and we'll create the same recesses here. See, these columns already exist here, so we have everything, we're matching everything that's there. So it's, it's stucco, there's, there's a black, this is just painted down here, this is painted stucco. So this, this entire stucco drive-in, you know, we use those terms these days, ethos, will continue the same, because this is what the entire facade is made of.
And the same with the awning as well, it will just be the same?
It'll be a canopy, and it will, it'll be the same, we'll match, exactly, its dimensions from off the building, its height off the ground, it will match, because we have something already to match. So our intention is, other than a line here, it'll look like it's one way.
And I think you mentioned this already, but there won't physically be anything within that additional space, this is purely for signage, is that right?
Correct.
Like, next to the Kidville sign, there's nothing, that's just a physical space to pull out.
No storage, no nothing.
Right, right.
It's, it's a canopy that, you know, someone had asked last time, it's just a box.
Right.
It's literally just some wires that run through for the lights.
And that, the color of the canopy could change, depending on who the tenant is?
Well, the intention is that maybe one day they'd like to have a blue canopy, it might show the downstairs, maybe there's a national chain that decides to go down there, and they may ask, and we may, at that time, say to them, all right, if you think it helps your branding, then we'll do a blue stuff, we'll do a blue canopy. We're just looking for that flexibility, to say, we may lose Kidville one day, and I get something else in here, and they don't want red, they want green. So, we would end up with potentially a green canopy one day, which is typical of all downtowns, it's sort of tenant-driven at times.
Is it possible, because you have two signs and two tenants down on the lower level, you can have two different colors in that new signage?
It, you know, it's something that we, unless the board doesn't, is not looking for two different, we just thought if we, if we did one, you know, if this were blue down here and that white up here, it just, we distinguished the two completely from each other, if, potentially, if this was a national chain, and they came in with their colors, they may be looking for that area that is allocated to the lower.
I think that would give, I mean, that would give it, if you have two different colors and two different lettering styles, that gives it a whole different appearance.
Yeah, because, you know, as I listen to the testimony, I mean, the way you've presented it is, we're making this look exactly the way Kidville looks, which makes sense to my eye. I mean, it, it doesn't actually bother me that the two signs are on top of each other, I think it makes sense, the argument you've put forward, but if it's going to now be the Kidville sign, or not the Kidville sign, and then two different signs, possibly, two different lettering styles and colors, I struggle a bit with that.
I can't control sign, and signing is not, it's a fluid, you know, situation, but...
But I, I think that we can certainly put that as a condition that would run with this, if you want to have the same color background, because you are putting, stacking two signs above each other, which we haven't, we haven't seen in any place else.
Right.
But that, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with you that that would be a detriment to looking at this. It could be actually quite attractive, if it was something interesting, I'm sure the tenants wanted to look really good as well, they're not going to do anything that's pretty outrageous, so.
I, I just wanted to be clear that we've, I've spoken with our client about it, and our client would like the ability to, I don't think, run a spectrum of 10 different colors, but maybe one's red, one's blue, and to maybe change the font. Now, we'd be locked into the dimensions, we'd be locked into the letter height, that we couldn't do anything about. I mean, if, if you can think of some way, so that you can get a little bit of what concerns you, okay, but give us that kind of freedom, that's what the client wants to do. I think the client's doing a pretty good job with this property so far, keeping it clean and paved and everything, and I think that, I think they will continue to do that. But they've asked us to try to have a little bit of flexibility, only in terms, as John is saying, in terms of colors and in terms of the font, but we would be locked into dimensions and we would be locked into letter size. No one's going to all of a sudden come in and double the size of the letters. That would be part of your approval.
I think that's reasonable, honestly, I think it would be nice, maybe with some different colors going on, just to make the stores pop out, and, you know, add some interest.
Well, I would, I would actually keep the background the same, and have the lettering be different colors.
I think we should, you know, make the applicant, you know, be tied into colors or lettering.
I mean, what I'm saying is, the background should be the same, only in that area, it doesn't have to match Kidville.
So not, not have two separate colors of multiple colors?
So you're saying it could be blue, but it should be blue throughout?
Blue throughout that little square, though.
That little square.
Yeah, yeah, I'd agree with that, and I think that would, this should be the same.
Although the letters could be contrary.
Letters could be purple or red or whatever, but...
And also, the awning can change.
The awning could change colors, yeah. I mean, it's such a hidden away little corner there, whatever can attract the eye, I think, is helpful to the, to the renters, and we want to encourage businesses in that corner, I would think.
If it's Starbucks, they'll pay to come back to the board.
That's true.
Starbucks has a non-competition.
Starbucks does make concessions.
Starbucks will want to have the signage color.
So I have one more witness.
All right. I just have to ask, are there any members of the public that have questions for this witness?
Seeing that.
Mr. Owen.
Great. Thank you, John. Michael, please.
Sir, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Yes, my name is Michael J. Pesolano, that's spelled P-E-S-S-O-L-A-N-O, a licensed professional planner in principle and founder of MJP Land Use Planning, LLC. I was retained to perform a planning analysis for this application.
Would you please, very briefly, advise the board of your qualifications? A sentence or two will probably do it.
And I can vouch for Mr. Pesolano's qualifications.
Thirty-plus years.
I've worked with him extensively in the past.
Hundreds of appearances.
So I offer Mr. Pesolano as a professional planner.
We'll accept him.
Okay.
Before you begin, could I just get the name of your company again, please, sir? But go to New Jersey, if that matters.
Okay, so I would like you to please review so much of the project as is necessary for your testimony, and I'd like you to go kind of to the heart of the variances and just sort of lay them out and express your opinion.
Sure. You've heard plenty about the property and the purpose of the application, we're now down to the technical aspects of, are the warrants there for the board to take positive action on the requested relief? I think there is. In order to form that opinion, I looked at the application materials, visited the site, just examined the master plan and relevant zoning regulations, discussed with my client's team, and came to the conclusion that this represents a very positive adaptation of signage to a problematic location. We have two factors, as was mentioned earlier, working against signage performing as it should, which is the distance from Valley Road, leading to a taller letter height, and the change in topography right where the signage needs to be on the side facing Alvin Place. Those two factors would allow the board to consider, under the C1 analysis, where a hardship relative to the topography and existing structures on the property, to be a basis for granting the relief. But all the relief also qualifies quite fairly for, under the C2 analysis, where the benefits need to substantially outweigh any detriments. And for that analysis, before I do that, let me just detail each of the items so that we're all on the same page with what I'm talking about with this bundle of relief. So as I understand it, the application, so constituted, it certainly doesn't require de-variance relief for use, this is a permitted use in the NC district, but a side yard setback of 2.6 feet, where six feet is required, is for the sideways projection of the facade. The wall sign location not being at the storefront where it is expected to be in the ordinance, that's number two. A wall sign vertical dimension of 48 inches versus 24 inches allowed.
Forty-two.
Excuse me, 42 inches, that's for the sign over sign orientation, and given the small space available for that to fit in and be tasteful, those dimensions are a hardship to do anything different with, added to the distance from Valley Road, quite frankly, if you want. A sign to be seen, it really needs to do that, to be visible, once you get on the property. The wall sign quantity, two versus one per tenant, we have the two spaces on facing Alvin Place, each warranting a sign in that orientation, but in order to be matched with the parking, as Ms. Tally said, they need to face forward where the parking will be as well. Wall sign orientation on a private road versus a public road is another item of relief. The wall sign area, we don't feel that that is a variance needed because we will match the storefront linear footage, we'll actually be well below the 47 feet of linear feet of the office space with the proposed sign above that at 22 square feet, it's one square foot per linear foot of storefront. In my analysis, I took storefront to mean the glazing part, not the full width of the space behind cinder block that you can't discern. The storefront proper must relate to something visible for it to have meaning, so I believe that 47 feet provides for adequate, more than enough, area for our 22-square-foot sign. And the sign height being greater than 12 feet above the ground floor, the proofs will apply to this, but I don't think that's necessary either because this measurement location is a severe drop in elevation compared to the rest of the grade around the whole structure, so I don't think the sign ordinance intended to have such a situation to regulate, but nonetheless, measure it from the grade below this, directly below the sign, we exceed the 12 feet. So as I said, these, and by the way, just for what it's worth, I did bring with me an exhibit, but I think everybody gets the location, the situation, and I'll dispense with presenting that and just jump right to the meat of the relief. In order for C2 relief to be granted, this needs to be a specific piece of property, which I think it is, certainly challenging situations on the south side, as have been discussed at length already, but this sign package, and together with the ADA upgrade, I think represents a very positive project. And in considering the weighing analysis under the C2 part of the statute, all of the benefits of the application accrue to each individual element of zoning relief required. It's not that you break down each zoning item and say, is this better or worse, better or, it's the application as a whole, does it substantially outweigh any detriment? I have to truly say, I see no detriment to, at all, to the sign package as it's proposed. It's tasteful, it's consistent with the existing setting, all the way down to the coloring, if that's the way it goes, but I appreciate the board's discussion about flexibility there. I agree that that would be better than a rigid assignment of colors. But the, the package as a whole will enable people intending to visit specific stores to get to them, and that's what signage is supposed to do in the big picture, and not only to get to them, but conveniently and safely. I think you're all very understanding of what not having good signage means in terms of its impact, possible impact on safety and congestion. So this brings more order to a site that could, you know, be characterized as chaotic if you cannot find the place you're expecting to find here. So this brings that order, and that's a positive benefit to the application, together with the ADA access, which hasn't existed for a long, long time, now making those spaces accessible, not just for visitors, but potentially for employees who may come on a daily basis to work there, this is a new opportunity for them altogether. As to the negative criteria, there are two prongs to be discussed, one is any detriment to the surrounding neighborhood and any impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I'll take the last first. In reviewing the zoning regulations and their intent and the zone, and the master plan materials, the reexam report in 2016 and the land use plan in 2017, as amended, I saw no emphasis on completing a sign package in the way that we're proposing being a negative thing. So I find consistency with the policy of wanting to make each business visible to the visitors, so we are squarely hitting on a goal of the planning policy for the township by promoting this signage as we are. We're providing, proposing this signage as we are. But for each of the items, the canopy, as to the setback on the side, it's simply a canopy, not an entire building side, so I think it should be viewed with a bit of leniency because of it being what it is, not an entire structure being 2.6 feet from the road. It will also have the benefit of covering the user's entry to the lift and the covering at the top of the stairs, always a good thing in foul weather, regardless of your physical abilities. The storefront that we're trying to provide signage for is fairly buried away from view from Valley Road, so the wall sign not being just at the location but facing front as well, makes sense in that particular setting. The vertical dimension, I think we've covered that previously, it relates to two panels, not overdoing a single sign at the 42 inches, it's to accommodate actually two tenant uses. The quantity of signs, I think it, it's clear that you just can't see them from the Valley Road perspective and from the parking perspective, so it really makes sense. If we want businesses to succeed in this location, getting the customers there safely makes sense, and this is, I think, the minimum effort needed, the minimum doing of signage that will get that result as good as it can be. The wall sign orientation, I think, you know, the private road versus a public road is technical in nature, Alvin Place is a private road, but it does have a flourish of businesses on both sides of it, so it's important to recognize the importance of signage from that perspective as well as the Valley Road perspective.
It functions as a public road, in other words.
It provides travel opportunities to the public for a variety of uses, including the subject property, correct. The wall sign height, somewhat higher, the minimalist dimension, in my opinion, above the grade level below it, again, is starting from a very suppressed, depressed area of the site, taking the measurement, but where my touring of the site and looking at the existing signage, which this will fairly well match, that's where the eyeball aims from the car view, to see that if it was any lower, you might have to crane your neck to see the sign, and I think it makes sense to have them consistently where they belong, where they are proposed. I think they'll be most effective that way. So I think I've spoken too much already, a lot of technicalities, but it's important to set forth for the record that you do have plenty of warrants for the granting of the relief requested, and good conscience to move this property, which has experienced recent upgrades, continue that upgrade process into a very positive direction of providing adequate signage and ADA access, I think is a very positive application with no substantial detriment, certainly, the positives outweigh the negatives in the C2 analysis here. So with that, I believe the modest improvements are tasteful and will truly enhance the viability of this center and be of benefit to the people who come here as well, so it's not just benefiting the property owner. Statutory tests for the relief requested, I think, are met, and I submit to your approval is indeed warranted. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you.
Please.
I've stolen over the property stuff, I think it needs to be cleared up, we have a different lot that we're crossing over, but side yard requirements is zero or six feet, you're proposing 2.6.
Yes.
So why is there no variance requested for that?
There is a variance requested for that.
That was...
It says no variance requested on A0.
That was leading the list in my testimony. The 2.6-foot setback that I mentioned.
It's in the zoning chart on the plans, it's in the notice of hearing, and he did address it, yes.
Okay, so then when you measure the setback, is it from the building or the plant?
It's from the projecting element at the sign bit.
Okay. The projecting element, is that the planter or the building?
That's the...
You're the planter that's along the side?
Yes, I do.
Does that require a variance?
That's not new, so it is what it is, tracking with the retaining wall.
I'm sorry, would you, is that considered a structure with respect to?
No.
It's not, so you can build a planter there wherever you want?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I guess it's become clear that I'm concerned about there being enough signage, and I want to your opinion. So the problem I see is sometimes you see, if the signs aren't big enough and you're looking for this, these businesses, and people don't see them, they'll drive by, they'll turn into Alvin Place maybe, or, and then they'll try to get out of Alvin Place by making a left-hand turn to get back in the parking lot. So I want to make sure that, in your opinion, the signs that are proposed are adequate to make sure that people will see these new businesses if they're driving by, coming north, going south.
I think they will for the following important reason. I put myself in the visitor's vantage point when I consider signage applications that I'm serving on, and I do a run through what my eyes would be drawn to when I enter a property, and the first thing that I would look for is the name I'm seeking, and that's easily done when the signage is all on pretty much the same vertical plane, I'm sorry, horizontal plane of perception. So it's not going to be the pharmacy sign, it's not going to be the Acme sign, not going to be the Kidville sign, but in continuing that search, bingo, I will hit the sign for one of the two tenants on the left that I'm seeking. So it will be effective in the proposed location for that principal reason, in my opinion, and from either driveway as well on Valley Road.
Coming either direction?
No, from either driveway, there are two, in and out driveways.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
From Valley Road, you can do what I just said in the same manner from either one.
Because it's relatively a residential area on the opposite side of the supermarket, so you don't really want cars missing the turn and driving around trying to get into the side, so that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Correct, fortunately, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Fortunately, there's an inlet off of Alvin Place so that you don't have to mingle back with Valley Road traffic if you did happen to go down Alvin Place and find no parking for the uses you were seeking.
Any questions from the public for this witness? I see none.
Okay, I don't have any other...
Your courtesy is most appreciated, thank you.
I don't have any other witnesses to call, and I think that between the detail of the testimony and your thoughtful questions, I think you've got a very, very good handle on this, and I'm not going to give you a summary because we can all get out of here, I think, a little earlier tonight. I just wanted to add one thing, I think it's the only thing I would have added to your testimony. On the negative criteria, the zoning ordinance, of course, contains sign regulations, and at the beginning of the sign regulations, as you know, Janice, they have a statement of the purposes of them, and one of the purposes that is there really just crystallizes the application. The statement is, is that signage should provide equal visibility, and I think that's really what this application has come down to. So with that, I'm going to give it to you to...
Thank you.
Decide.
I mean, my personal feeling is that it makes sense, I like it, that the backgrounds are the same and it kind of has that nice flow, as Mr. Pasolino was saying, I agree, the, you know, you look right across the horizontal bands in any sort of shopping center like this and look for your specific tenant that you're looking for. So that makes a lot of sense to me. I am concerned that, you know, the color can go a little haywire and have too many colors and maybe too many fonts and everything, but I think the idea of limiting it to a single background color makes sense to me, and I would support this application. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I agree, it completely changes the game, it's going to make that, those stores very visible, so it's good. I agree, the same colors, but different color, you think it doesn't really go with the center, the same color, you'd walk right to it, and then you figure out to go down the stairs, so it really works.
Same color background, you mean, with different letters?
I mean, I think that works, because people are going to park in that lot.
I think that's boring, I think if you had different colors for them.
Well, the objective is to get people to the store.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
But it's going to capture, I see. One question or condition I might have is, I think the addresses of those sites should be cleared up so that they have Valley Road addresses, so that if you put them into your GPS, you're not looking for Alvin Place, you know they're going to be on Valley Road.
Once we consolidate the lots, we'll have a single address.
Yeah, because people, you know, if they don't know where they are, they'll be using GPS and the address should be, get you there, it's no problem.
I'm for it.
For it as well. The other condition we discussed was around the drainage, though, ensuring that it didn't go out into this kind of Alvin Place streetway there.
So can I propose a condition? The applicant will confer with Mr. Watkinson when they put together their plans, and the applicant will work with Mr. Watkinson to get a drainage structure or a drainage plan that's agreeable to him, and then you have your board engineer involved right in the process.
I actually have that as a condition.
I know, I know, sit it on.
I have a few more, too. You'll provide the easement?
If you want us to.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, well, the easement or just the ability to use the concrete walk for...
Right.
For...
Whatever that right is, yes.
Yeah, whatever, just prove that there's a, you know, because you've got what looks like a leftover property, Jared Kirsten, you have that other lot back there for TMF Residential, which is a different lot, so whatever you have to use it is fine.
We'll consolidate the lots.
I have that down, yes.
Yep. Coordinate the drywall or drainage structure with Mr. Watkinson. I heard that the walls would be repainted and the concrete would be cleaned up, I don't know if that needs to be a, that's what Mr. Buckhold said, you know, make it look nice. Submit a lighting plan.
In the lighting plan, so are these signs illuminated? And would the lighting plan cover the illumination?
These are halo-lit signs, so they're permitted. They're not internally illuminated signs.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Right, thank you.
Just a question about, is it a consistent color with the illumination?
Will it match the background color?
You guys.
I happen to drive by on my way here, and the existing Kidville sign is like a neutral white. So, I assume that you're going to use something like that?
Yeah, I'm not even sure what, how the Kidville sign came up. So, we'll make it consistent. Usually the halo is usually a cool white.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
We'll check and see what the.
But I don't think it, I don't think it needs to be a condition that it's consistent.
Mr. Buckholz, your testimony would be cool if you got it on the record.
Are you talking about the LED lighting, not the sign lighting?
Not the.
The sign, the lighting behind the letters. Oh, well, that's, yeah.
I happened to just see this, I happened to just see this tonight, okay? What happens is, there's no illumination coming through the white Kidville letter.
Oh.
You have a halo-lit sign, so.
It's splash.
You find the letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, the back lid, is that the other one?
So, the letters are opaque, but the glow comes from outside of the letters.
Yeah.
That's right.
I don't think you need to address that.
Yeah.
And then the other final condition was a single background color of the sign?
The new one.
The new sign, yes. I wrote the southern sign.
I have that down.
That's correct.
You're taking my job away from me here.
Well, and the typical conditions. Those are yours. Those are yours. And with that, unless there are any more, I'd make a motion to approve of those conditions.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you.
Do we have committee reports?
Actually, I have something.
I'm quite sure.
Do we have time?
That I will be.
I actually have something I'd like to talk to the board about.
What'd you say, Janice?
Something I'd like to talk to the board about under committee reports.
Oh, great.
I do not, I do not want those. As long as I have the slides, I'm okay. All right, you can take them with you. One of the things that's come up is, we have a pending application for the Ferraris property on Orange Road next to, between the hotel.
Next to the hotel, yeah.
Right. Right, right. I know we had talked about it last year. The issue is that when the ordinance adopting the amendment to the redevelopment plan was adopted, I think there were some errors in the language in the ordinance. And that's what I would like to pass out to the board members, because I am recommending that the planning board make a recommendation to the council to correct the language in the redevelopment plan. I think they've already filed their application. I don't think we're going to change their application, because we have one pending for 50 units on that property, but it will at least give us an opportunity to clarify what the intent is.
What is the nature of the application? What are they, they're going to, they're going to sell the property and create?
Developers come in, they want to build a four-story mixed-use building.
Right next to the hotel on the Ferrara property?
Yeah, yeah. We permitted four stories.
Okay.
But they're proposing 50 units. Amazingly, there, there's tons of variances, particularly for parking. But as you can see in the memo that I passed out here, we created, we permitted multifamily residential office and mixed-use buildings at that location, but we had a maximum density of 18 units per acre and these side yard setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. But the language that was adopted exempted mixed-use buildings, or appears to exempt mixed-use buildings from these requirements. Because under that section 4.1.7.3, we titled it multifamily residential office and mixed-use buildings on Orange Road, here's a sentence that probably should have been changed. It says, "The following requirements apply to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component." And that was not the intent. So, my recommendation is to suggest to the council that it be corrected to say that the following requirements apply to new multifamily residential and mixed-use buildings, and take out the no commercial component, because there was never an intent to have it not apply to mixed-use buildings. As you can recall, when it came to you, there weren't, it was only residential use. And the planning board recommended, well, it should be mixed use, because it was sent to the council allowing commercial uses. Um, was that section, that length, that sentence never came out?
It was allowing commercial or it was prohibiting commercial?
The planning board wanted to expand the permitted uses on that property to include commercial and mixed-use buildings. That was the recommendation back to the council and the EDC. The question, the issue is that this statement never came out. So, now we have an application coming in for a four-story mixed-use building of 50 units.
But they're not taking advantage of that.
Is this a notification that you're kind of?
What?
This is written into law, right?
Yeah.
So, don't we need to notify the, I mean, can we just do this and say it's a mistake, change the law, or?
No, they're going to make a recommendation to the council to change the ordinance.
And they've already, they've already, they filed their application on August 30th.
So, it won't change their application, because it's the law at the time of application, right?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want, we can discuss that later. Okay? All I'm saying is, I think that let's clarify what the intent was.
And how do we know what the intent is?
The, I remember discussion about the commercial component, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, the planning board wanted.
I feel like Mr. Inwali was one of the main people that was discussing it.
I have no clue what I said.
Right, I know, I know. It came, I can tell you from looking through my records, we came in, it was just permitting residential, and the planning board said, well, you, your recommendation was to expand it to include commercial uses. So, that's what's sent back to the council, but that sentence was never corrected. The sentence, we amended the permitted uses, there's a table of permitted uses, we amended some of the other open space requirements and the setback requirements, we have a much larger setback requirement, but we never took out this sentence.
Hey, so Janice, in this 4.1.7.3, is that the entire, on the second page there, that's exactly how it is in the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
The redevelopment plan, so there's no other language in that?
That's, that applies, well, there's other language that applies to that property, but.
Oh, no, no, I mean, for example, the 4.1, the entire section is right there, right?
Right, that's it.
Okay, so it's entitled multifamily residential office, but down below, it never really talks about density of office or how much office or whatever. Is that, like, is that controlled someplace else?
No, it was supposed to be controlled by the ABC, the maximum dense, there's no, there were no, the controls on the office were basically the height.
Height and setbacks.
The setbacks.
Setbacks, okay.
And, and the parking. So, are there other issues that you'll see that are part of this application when it comes before you, but I just wanted to bring this to discussion.
So, the following requirements apply to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component. They've applied for a multifamily residential building with no commercial component?
No, they have commercial components.
They have a commercial component.
So, from their perspective, they don't think anything in this, in this paragraph applies to them. That's their.
Well, that's their position, that's how they're taking advantage of.
Well, if there's nothing else, if there's nothing else in this, then it's just by definition, or just by reading it, it's wrong, because, you know, the headline, the title says multifamily residential office and mixed-use buildings.
That's my argument.
And yet, what we're describing is one small.
Right.
Well, that's why you can answer.
Option, so it makes no sense the way it's written.
That's correct. And I make, and I make that, I made that argument, or I will be making that argument in my report, but I thought that it would, at the same time, I thought it would make sense to try and clarify it, so that we're not debating and bring it from you, to clarify it in a report from the planning board to the council, so that there's clarity.
Okay. If there was a commercial component, what would, they would still get 18 units per acre?
Right. Yeah, they can get 18 units per acre, that would be either commercial, that would not change that 18 units per acre, whether or not, whether it's purely residential or mixed-use. The intent was that the 18 units per acre would apply to both, much like, right now, we have 55 units per acre. For the most part, it applies to both, right now.
So, the developer needs this, otherwise, otherwise, we wouldn't know what to do. In other words, their application would come in, we wouldn't know how to apply this, so they need it. Otherwise, they're dead in the water, because they have a mixed-use building, right?
Right, otherwise, otherwise.
So, then there's nothing that tells you what to do with mixed-use buildings if you don't put that sentence in there.
Well, they would say, yes, okay, yes. They would follow the same regulations that applied to the Valley and Bloom project, which basically had no density. It had height, it had, and it had zero front, zero setbacks, there was like a three-foot setback from Bloomfield Avenue.
But what, what use that's commercial is allowed for, and we're talking lots 19, 20, and 21?
Right, we have, we have a table of, and I didn't copy that, but.
I'm looking at it.
We have a table in, in the redevelopment plan that has uses. Ultimately, what the council did is they did not permit medical offices, they permitted, they went, they permitted.
Banks, health, fitness.
If you've got it, I don't have it with me.
It's right here.
So, that's, that's already addressed, the specific uses. You know, health and fitness centers are not permitted.
There's no commercial.
Well, this is also the proposed resolution, so I don't know if this is fine, what was, it's all I could quickly search on my computer here.
If you look at the redevelopment plan on the computer, there's a table in there that has all the permitted uses, and it includes a variety of commercial uses.
Yeah, this might have gotten changed.
But it's, you could have very small retail space.
Yeah.
And classify yourself as mixed-use.
Right, and it was never the intent to allow them to put in, you know, 50 square feet of commercial and call it mixed-use.
Yeah, like a bubble gum shop or something.
Yeah.
So, it's not entirely clear if the title is or is not part of.
That's the problem, there's a lack of clarity.
Okay.
And I'm trying to address that. Okay.
So, I guess the, what I'm looking at, and again, I'm not fully sure where this was in the process, but the title of 4.1.7.3 is just multifamily residential.
Where's that, what are you looking at?
Whatever I'm staring at here, which I think is the, a draft of the resolution.
Okay.
For the council, so maybe it got changed.
Yeah, you need to look at the redevelopment plan.
Okay.
Which is on our website.
And it's, okay.
You're looking at the draft of the resolution that came to the, to you guys.
I think so. The only.
Where you change, it changed, because we then add, that's when we added the commercial uses.
Okay. Because I think the only, the only thing I have downloaded is the 2011 version of the redevelopment plan, so I don't have the latest one.
So, the purpose of this is to regulate the number of units in one of these mixed-use areas, right? Otherwise, it really has no other purpose, because we don't say anything about office. You know, there's nothing in here which limits office, there's no constraints on office.
No.
The side yard, why is the side yard here? Is the side yard not someplace else? Or is it a different side yard?
There's no side yard setback for Valley and Bloom.
So, if?
So, the idea was to create a side yard setback requirement and a rear yard setback requirement for this project.
I don't know, I'm kind of uncomfortable.
Yeah, I kind of would like to go back to, like, just have a little bit of time and see.
Sure.
Just kind of refresh my recollection of what we said at that meeting and kind of where, where we're trying to go.
Okay.
And if it's a typo, then, you know, I think we should certainly fix it.
Well, then, that's something we can.
Do we have a little bit of time on this?
Well, we meet again next week.
There we go.
This is pending, coming before the, this whole, this application has been filed. It will be coming before the development review committee in October, so, and just so that you know, the applicant is Pinnacle.
Great.
Okay, so, oh, the number recused. I can't say anything. Yeah, anything to Pinnacle, yeah. I didn't know, okay.
I mean, we should, I'm, this is separate from the application, because I'm trying to address.
It's a separate issue anyhow.
Everybody you've said so far.
The intent, I probably should have even told you who the applicant was.
Well, but, but I mean, now I know, so I can't.
Let's just leave it there, and the board can revisit it without you, Tony.
Well, you won't be here next week, so, nice and easy.
Does this pertain to more than the Ferrara site, though?
It's just that, well, there's three properties, two that are owned by Ferraris, and the third one is a 25-foot-wide piece of property owned by, that contains a garage. A storage garage.
But no one can get hold of it. Contiguous with Ferraris?
Yes.
But on the other side, where the police department is, that's another gate.
That's a different redevelopment plan.
That's a totally different one. So, when we're looking at that, we're just thinking about the Ferrara site.
Right.
Could this be interpreted to mean if there is a mixed-use building, there is no minimum side yard or minimum rear yard?
Well, that's, that's what they want to do. There's no density, there's no, there's no side yard, there's no rear yard.
And even with what we saw in 256 Park Street, that was mixed-use, this issue could have arisen then as well? Well, it's separate, because it's a whole different thing.
Different, yeah.
This is redevelopment.
Yeah, so, I, you know, we, I just bring it to your attention, you could think about it, we can talk about it at a, at a future date.
Okay.
Okay? Just wanted to make you aware of it.
And you'll, you'll circulate this to the full board?
Yeah, yeah. Okay? Because it is going to become an issue as this application comes around, just what was the intent between, behind this language, and I've been saying that it was to apply it. Okay?
My recollection is that we were trying to disallow commercial components on the first floor for some.
Commercial.
Commercial on the first floor, and I don't remember if it was for traffic concerns or circulation or what it was, but I, that's my initial recollection. So, it would make sense to me, we were trying to say no commercial component on the first floor, but that is just my recollection at the moment, and I'd like.
I don't remember that much.
I'd like to go back and revisit it.
Good.
Was this, we did this in a public hearing, or was this a workshop, or when we, when we talked about that?
It was, I believe it was a referral from the council.
Oh, okay.
Would be on tape, so we can listen to the discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
Date, was it?
I'll have to look it up.
Maybe when you send this, you might want to tell us.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
If there was one or two meetings that we considered it at, probably just one.
Right. Probably best, well, we'll see how our agendas are.
Yeah.
It's something, if we have a real full agenda, I didn't really want to have this discussion at midnight.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other committee reports? An early night.
Okay.
All right, none. Any questions or comments on the bills? I think they're okay.
None of the bills, I just wanted to go directly to the abstaining on the two gates that I wasn't here for the minutes on meetings.
Okay.
So, motion to pay bills?
Oh, yeah. So moved. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I just have one more thing. I had sent around the memo about HomeCor honoring Mr. Smith and Paul Seonis. I don't know if anybody were interested in going to the event at the Mayfair.
Mr. Scott.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Scott, yeah, our own Mr. Scott.
What's, what's the individual price of going?
Seventy-five dollars, I think, yeah, yeah, seventy-five dollars.
To me, it looked like it started at that.
Well, I just sent you my, my, what I got, yeah, yeah.
I don't think so.
Yeah, anyway. So we have our next meeting, is next Monday, and you should have your packets.
That's what this is?
And that's for Lakkawana Plaza, so we won't see Tony.
I guess I won't be here, yeah, because it was said, and so.
Yeah, we did, they did submit a new parking study, which is in your packet, and a report from Langin on the parking, and then there was a report from the Township's Fire Official.
Okay. I assume that's all online at this point, too?
It is online.
Perfect.
And if you have any problems, contact, you know, let me know, and sometimes, I tried to reorganize it so you can figure out the dates of the 25 submissions online. I have just another question for you. Sorry, am I interrupting?
I was going to ask Cam a question.
Well, I'm just-
Did you have a way to download them all at once?
No, I have not found a way to download all.
All right, that's all I wanted to-
But the best that I can do is click them all, and then go to my downloads folder, and then just both grab them and copy them over. It's about the fastest I've found.
Okay.
Just with respect to Lakkawana, are there other discussions outside of the planning board that are going on with HPC and Pinnacle, the EDC and Pinnacle, or at this point, it's just what we are hearing?
The public hearing is pending before the planning board. The EDC is not involved. Now, the HPC did have a meeting this evening, independent of what we're doing here, to discuss Lakkawana Plaza.
Okay.
That's all I can say. I don't know what they, I don't know what the result of their discussion is.
I don't know what the result is either, I couldn't make it.
I'm sure they'll be in touch with us if they-
I'm sure they'll be at the meeting Monday night.
That, too.
Okay. So, I think, just regarding Lakkawana Plaza, Keith, I mean, you, I think the perception from certain, is that the board doesn't hear what they're saying because the board's not responding directly to what, and we just need to reiterate that you're, you are hearing, you are listening, you're not responding because you are required by law-
Mm-hmm.
-to not prejudge the application and give the applicant the opportunity to complete their case.